Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Would you please call the roll?
Beth McLennan.
Here.
Matt Rogers.
Here.
Scott Gingold.
Andrew Gallimore.
Here.
Violetta Cullen.
Here.
Mary Beth Burns.
Mirna Arabalo.
Here.
With five members present, we do have a quorum. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz. I saw it in the mirror as he...
He's going back.
Okay. We may be joined occasionally by interim planning and zoning administrator Demir Latinovich. This is a formal meeting, and there are certain rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person at a time speaks, so that all testimony may be accurately recorded. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file, and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and sign in on the provided sheet. Our meetings are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements, so that you may be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are four items on the agenda this evening. However, the matter for 825 Chicago Avenue has been withdrawn, and one of the other cases is a continuation from our previous hearing in which the record is closed and we are just taking a vote. The two new cases is the applicant from 1910 Wesley Avenue present, and the applicant from 1820 Dodge. Thank you. The first matter on the agenda is to approve our minutes from our May 5 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to look through those, and are there any edits that need to be addressed? If no one has any, other than the fact that I just noticed my name is misspelled on page three, I'm encouraging board participation. Evidently, that was someone other than me, because it's someone without a D in their name. Very last under discussion.
Yeah. Discussion to encourage board participation.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I motion that we approve the minutes of the May 5 meeting.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. I will note that any member who is not voting was not present at that meeting. The first matter on the agenda is the matter of 1323 Ashland Avenue, which is a continuation for a vote. We have a couple of members who were not present at that last meeting, which I believe And I know that you came in late, and so I will ask you, has each of you had an opportunity to review the records for the case?
I have.
And would you be willing to enter a vote at this time?
I vote that we approve the variances requested.
I agree.
So with two more affirmative votes, the final record will stand as a five vote in favor with none against, and there was one abstention. So that will be the final record for 1323 Ashland Avenue. Moving into our new business, as I mentioned, 825 Chicago Avenue has been withdrawn, and so the first matter will be 1910 Wesley Avenue. And if I could please have that read into the record.
Stuart Shamen, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a one-car attached garage. The applicant requests a two-foot rear yard setback where 25 feet is required, zoning code section 6877A4, and 46.4% building lot coverage where a maximum 45% is permitted, zoning code section 6876. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted April 17th, 2015, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plan, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, DAPR meeting minutes of May 6th, 2015, and 2014 application site plan and ZBA minutes, as well as a packet of information that was passed out at the beginning of the meeting that the applicant can explain further.
Thank you. At this point, I would ask that anybody who may be speaking to us in this matter, please be sworn by raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Stuart Shamen, Stuart Shamen Associates Architects, 1780 Ash Street, Northfield.
Gary Joyce, 1925 Wesley Avenue, Evanston.
Thank you. And if you would please tell us about your proposal.
I guess I'll start. The plan is to construct a new one-car garage on the west side of the existing structure on top of the existing parking, concrete parking pad, and connect it to the, to the It would be one-story and allow indoor parking and direct access into the house. We're seeking the, the variances on the rear yard setback reduced to two feet in order to, to do this. Part of the issue or the hardship is that this lot is considerably smaller than anything else on the block, and there isn't the, we can't make the required setback. It is on the alley, and adjacent garages going down the street are also on the alley. Anything to add?
That's a good thing.
We're basically not, there's a very minimal increase to the lot coverage and the impervious surfaces.
So most of us, I think, probably recall that this property has been before us before. This is a different plan than what was presented to us before. The previous plan had looked at adding a garage to the, is that the south of the, of the existing structure?
That's correct.
And doing a curb cut in off of the street, whereas this one appears to be placing a garage on the concrete pad or close to that space, which is currently existing and was existing at that time at the back of the house. So I'm assuming that the, the change in plan is to make it a little more agreeable to a number of the neighbors.
There was, there was one neighbor in particular that thought that it would be inconvenient, so rather than pursue it for a vote, we, we reconfigured the garage in a place where there is existing parking. I did go, part of my testimony today, is I did go to my neighbors, and we have more than a dozen signed petitions, and that petition also includes the changes that the staff recommended for the pitch of the roof and also moving of a window in the house. So they got a picture of that. And then I went one by one to these dozen neighbors and explained it, and there was at least five of them that were encouraging me anyway and joking. We usually talk about once a week or more, because we all have dogs, and we're all just a very friendly, talkative neighborhood. So everybody's encouraging us, and more than 60% of, of the block has said yes, and we had no noes and no abstentions.
And just for the record, is this a house that, you had given your address as 1925 Wesley, so I'm assuming this is not the house that is your primary residence?
That's correct. I've owned this house since 1982. It's existed on the tax rolls since before the turn of the century.
And so this is an attempt to make the house more rentable for you, or is it...
No. I anticipate that we're going to sell the house, and in our neighborhood, every house except for mine has a garage. And I was told by the Realtor that it's a non-starter not to have a garage.
Can we go over, can we clarify one more time? I'm sorry, I was looking at the plans. How does this exactly differ from the 2014 application?
Sure. Substantially, actually. One of the concerns of the 2014 application was to the south of the house where the concrete walkway is, we were going to add an additional driveway, which was going to increase the amount of, of concrete, and that, that was a concern. And it was a concern to the staff as well. So there was not uniformity. There was no unanimous vote on that one. The second issue was that there's a mature tree, and one of the people on the board just flat out said, "I don't want to see that tree go."
That was me.
Okay, that was you. Okay. So that being said, there is no driveway, there is no additional concrete, and all the vegetation stays. The, the garage would be placed similarly to the parking pad directly next door, and exactly the same as the one across the way. And by the way, we have yes signatures from that particular house, two from them, from 1914.
You mean across the alley?
Across the alley.
To the, to the north there?
To the north. So 1914, 1918, 1920, 1922, 1919 Wesley, 1929, all of these people said yes.
I have a question. So does it come to the exact lot line, like where the parking pad is? It's just going to cover that just like it is?
Yes.
No more, no less? That's the way it is?
Well...
I believe it may be slightly less.
A slightly less?
I think right now, the concrete may go right up to the property line, and we'll be two feet off of it.
Yeah. That's going to be an angle to come out, but I like this plan much better than the one that came out on the front.
We're also set back from the, from the, the alley and the, the north side of the house.
Right.
So we've stepped back a few feet, so there should be better turning.
Yeah, better turn. Okay. I like that plan.
Now, I have, I have a question. You wouldn't be in compliance regardless with the 25-foot setback?
That's correct. We're almost looking at it as if it were an accessory.
Okay.
Structure.
Yeah, the lot itself is one of Evanston's famous divided corner lot into two lots at one point, so the property is 75 feet deep, which is about half of a typical lot. Are there additional questions for the applicant? I will ask if anybody else would like to make a statement, but the applicant, the other applicant is the only other person in the room. So I will just ask if you have anything you'd like to say in summation before we close the record and begin deliberation.
No, I think I've covered it pretty well.
Thank you. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberation. We do have a set of standards that we must find are met for us to grant any variation requests, but before I go through those standards, I think the reception of this plan is better than the reception of the previous plan.
They're doing what I asked them to do last year.
So I think two of the people who had voted against it the last time it was before us now seem to be a little more in agreement with it. So we will go through the standards and make sure that all of our standards are met, and then make a determination. The first standard is the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. It sounds like the fact that this is the sole property in this area that doesn't have a garage, it definitely is, is something that would make the house more attractive. It appears that the house has been held by the current owner for several decades, and he is now attempting to, to sell it. And the fact that we don't have people coming out to speak against it this time, and the fact that we do have a number of letters of support that were handed to us earlier this evening, would lead me to believe that this standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Obviously, we like to see our housing stock redeveloped and repurposed whenever possible, and doing things to make it more attractive. The addition of a garage is something that we would expect to see in a, in a home in Evanston, and so I believe that this standard is also met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. As mentioned during testimony, the property itself is only 75 feet deep, and has a 40-foot frontage, therefore making it a substandard lot. The attempt to try to do anything on this lot really is impossible. The fact that the, the owner is looking at converting an existing parking pad, therefore not increasing the, the hard surface in the, in the small lot that is there, I think goes a long way to, to helping alleviate concerns. But this is a unique property because of its size, so that standard is met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. As mentioned, this is really just putting a garage on an existing parking pad, and therefore just making the, the property more attractive and making it more useful to a future homeowner of this particular property, so that standard is met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, or there is a clause here that says if we can find a public benefit, additional income can be extracted. The reason I bring this up is because the owner has mentioned that it is his intent to sell the property. The house will be more attractive by having a garage, as he himself mentioned, but the fact is, the, the garage is not being added so that it can be rented or any additional income from that. It is part of the development of a property, and regularly, we approve requests for variations based on developments of properties to make them more attractive. So standard number five is met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. This is an old Evanston home, and although the, the property owner has held it for a number of years, I don't believe that he was involved in making it a substandard lot, and therefore, I would have to say that, that he has had no part in creating the, the biggest hardship here, which is the size of the lot. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And again, the fact that we are adding a small garage that covers an existing parking pad, as opposed to the previous plan, which had come before us, which had a garage and a parking pad, I think that everybody on the board feels much more comfortable with the fact that this is the minimum needed. Is everyone in agreement with my findings on standards?
Yes.
Yes.
With that, I will ask if there is a motion in the matter of 1910 Wesley Avenue.
I motion that 1910 Wesley Avenue, ZBA case 15ZMJV0031, we accept the, we approve the request for variance for a two-foot rear yard setback where 25 is required and 46.4% building lot coverage where a maximum of 45 is permitted.
Second.
I would add, I would just add before the motion is seconded, and the, the development be in substantial compliance with the documents and testimony provided.
I'll accept that additional.
Now, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the recommended, or the requests for 1910 Wesley Avenue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. With a vote of five in favor and none against, the motion carries, and therefore, the matter is approved. You can work with Melissa on exactly all the details of the project.
Thank you.
With that, we will move into our second matter this evening, which is the matter for 1820 Dodge Avenue. And would you please read that into the record?
Donna Lee Floater, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a new single-family residence and a two-car detached garage. The applicant requests a 3.5-foot north interior side yard setback where five feet is required, and a 3.5-foot south interior side yard setback where five feet is required for the principal structure, zoning code section 6847A3, and a 2.5-foot north interior side yard setback where 4.5 feet is required, and a 2.5-foot south interior side yard setback where 4.5 feet is required for the eaves of the principal structure, yard obstruction, zoning code section 6419B1. A 2.5-foot north interior side yard setback where three feet is required, and a 2.5-foot south interior side yard setback where three feet is required for the detached garage, zoning code section 6847C4. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted April 22nd, 2015, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated October 10th, 2014, site plan, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and DAPR meeting minutes of April 29th, 2015.
Thank you. At this point, I would ask that anybody who may speak to us in the matter of 1820 Dodge Avenue be sworn by raising your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. And if you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Donna Lee Floater. My address is 826 Gray Avenue, Evanston. I'm the architect for the project.
Hi, I'm Shelley Gates. I'm the department chair for career and tech ed at Evanston Township High School. I do live in Evanston. I live at 1810 Lee Street.
Thank you. If you would please tell us about the project.
Well, this is house number two in the curriculum for geometry and construction, which is just begun recently at Evanston High School. House one is at 1941 Jackson on a lot that was graciously donated by the City of Evanston for the project, and is about to be ready to be sold to a deserving family through Community Partners for Affordable Housing. This house will be managed and sold the same way. And Sarah Flax from the City's Department of Community Development, and she's the Housing and Grants Administrator, has been very instrumental in helping us locate lots for house two and hopefully future houses. It's the goal to construct one house a year for this curriculum. And if you haven't had a chance, there's about an eight-minute video on the high school's website that shows the construction of last year's house, and how it was moved to the site, and it's just really cool. So we're here before you this evening to talk about house number two, which is to be placed on a lot at 1820 Dodge. That lot is only 25 feet wide. It is only 3,000 square feet in total area, so any house there is either going to be very small or will need to come before you with variances. The lot has been vacant for quite some time. I believe it was subdivided well over 100 years ago. I believe there was a house originally on the site that has been torn down. Like I said, it's been vacant for quite some time. Chairman Rogers is always so good about going through the standards, and I believe our application hit each one pretty well, but just a couple of things. One thing I wanted to talk about specific to some of the requests, we're asking for side yard setbacks, because a house, a compliant house could only be 15 feet wide, and that is pretty small to manage sizable rooms to make a home suitable for a family. We need to have stairs going up. We need to have hallways, so that extra three feet has made a difference in the layout of the house. The, a little bit about eaves, I will tell a quick anecdote about the necessity of eaves. Recently, I was meeting a client, and they had the windows open in their home. A rainstorm appeared, very hard rain. They have no eaves, and rain poured in their windows. I was worried, because I had left my windows open at home when I got home. My house with eaves had no water in it, so I do believe that in, in addition to making a house more attractive, it fits in with the style of other homes already in this neighborhood. They are a practical part of the construction of the house. On the garage, just to mention that, we are hoping that we can attract a family to purchase this house. The city calls for 400 square feet on the property for parking. We could have achieved that with just a slab, but we'd like to construct a garage there as safer and more secure for storing cars and bicycles, et cetera. Excuse me. So that's part of our request as well. Well, I think that covers it.
Just a, a quick question, because this is kind of a unique undertaking in the City of Evanston, this being the second house that is being built. My understanding is the house will actually be constructed off-site?
It's currently being constructed in the back parking lot of the high school. The students have been working on it this whole school year, and it's, hopefully, if this all gets approved, we'll get a foundation in the ground, and the house will be able to be moved. And that, that was the process for last year's house. Just due to logistics of having the students do the work, it's being constructed there. Otherwise, the students would have to be taken to the site and brought back, et cetera, so...
And because of the unique... And because of the unique undertaking of this particular venture, ETHS is considered the developer on this?
They are considered the owner.
The owner. Okay.
They... This lot, there weren't any lots in the city of Evanston's ownership this year, so this lot was purchased from another entity by the high school for this property.
And so, they will be the ones who will be recouping any of the proceeds from the sale of this property then?
Yes. Any... Should there be profits from the sale, they would be taken back into the program in order to construct and purchase a lot and construct next year's house.
So there is no profit as such? It's kind of like a not-for-profit, in which the funds that are raised are constantly turned over, and...
Yes.
I'm assuming that the plan is to make this an annual...
That is the goal.
Event?
And now that we're on house two, it's looking pretty positive.
Right.
And then, as I said earlier, the group Community Partners for Affordable Housing will be selling the home, so the purchasers meet a certain income level, and vetted through their process for selling to a family who meets the criteria for purchasing a home in their program.
And just because we're on TV, so this gives you an opportunity to give yourself a little advertising for this. Is this a program that students in the high school can enroll in?
Can talk about.
Maybe you could give us just a couple of minutes?
Sure. So Geometry and Construction is an interdisciplinary course that allows students to earn their geometry credit, and also credit in construction. And the geometry curriculum is... It's similar to the geometry curriculum that students take otherwise, and students can take it for regular or honors credit. It is one of the only times we've been able to successfully do an interdisciplinary course that has really taken off and is so successful. Next year, we have over 100 students in the course, and we now have a waiting list for it. So it's incredibly popular. Students are extremely enthusiastic. And as Donna Lee said, I mean, the point of... The way that we're doing this financially is that when we sell the house... It's supposed to be a self-sustaining program, so that it will not cost the taxpayers of Evanston additional funds going to the school. The idea is that each time we sell the house, the proceeds go into then the next year's house. We haven't sold last year's house quite yet, but we're getting close, and we'll be able... I think over time, we really will be able to implement it successfully, and in a way that benefits both the community, the students, and the high school will not be spending an inordinate amount of money on construction costs. So that's our goal. It's been actually phenomenal for everyone involved, so I think you guys should come and see. We'll invite you to a Community Build Day, so you can come out and help us out.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so how much will the students have to do with the moving of the house and the positioning of it on the lot?
We...
Just wonder.
They actually are not involved in that part of it.
Right.
We have a moving company that we were able to... It's kind of hard to find a moving company for a home. There isn't a company that's really close by here, so we use a company that is out of Wisconsin. They come on a designated day, and the city is so helpful. The police help us with closing off streets and making sure that we don't hit power lines and that sort of thing. And as Donna Lee said, the video that's on our website, it really shows the whole process is very exciting. So the students are not involved in that, and we... Last year, we moved the house, it was well after the school year was over.
Finals week.
Was it finals week?
It was like June.
It was, yes. And we'll be doing that again. Hopefully, we'll have more of an opportunity for the kids to be there to observe the whole process. Last year was our first year, so it was a little kind of last minute, but yeah.
But the kids are actually doing the building, framing and constructing the house, so... We have professionals who are doing the electrical, heating, plumbing, as required by city code. Oh, that was another thing I wanted to mention, that with the narrowness of the side yard and the eaves, because of the current rules in the building code, this house will be fully fire sprinklered, and Mario Tristan from the Evanston Fire Department has been extremely helpful in helping us work on possible grants, and working with a contractor to make that code requirement met, so...
And since you kind of said this is on TV, or whatever, I also would like to just thank Bob Fisher from Evanston Lumber, who is also a community partner. He has been so helpful, both in donating a lot of supplies, but he also works with his... The people that supply him, or some of the people that he works with, and they have been incredibly generous. And Bob is such a nice guy, and he's very self-effacing, and I just would like to thank him whenever I can, because he's been such a great partner.
Thank you. Are there additional questions for either Ms. Floater or Ms. Gates? Hearing none, I will just note that there is no one else in the room, so I will not ask if anybody else wishes to speak to us, and will instead just ask if you have anything you'd like to say in summation.
We apologize for not bringing students.
Right. We didn't know. Next time, we'll bring students.
Well, like I said, I just... I like the opportunity, because we are on public access television, so some people maybe have never heard of the program, and so it's an excellent opportunity for you to talk about it, because I know a number of people, myself included, are kind of familiar with it, but don't understand all the ins and outs of it. So with that, we will close the record, begin our deliberation. I will ask general board comments, I think, based off of line of questioning and everything. Everyone seems to be pretty much in agreement.
I get it.
So you may sit down. You don't have to stand while I go through our standards. Once again, as mentioned before, we do have a set of standards that we must find are met for us to grant any variation. The first standard being, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. As was mentioned in testimony, this is currently a vacant lot, and has been for some time, so the fact that we would be creating a single-family home on this lot should do much to improve property values and the overall enjoyment of the neighborhood, to have another single-family home in its place instead of a vacant lot. So standard number one is met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, part of the zoning ordinance is to look at the housing stock that we do have. This seems to be a fairly modest home, due to its size, but at the same time, it's a good home for starter homes, which sometimes we don't see too many of in Evanston. So I believe that standard number two has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. As was mentioned, the property is 25 feet wide, which is one of our many substandard lots. It's about 2,000 square feet below what a standard lot should be in the city, and so trying to build anything on the lot, we would expect someone to come before us and request some level of variation. So standard number three is met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Testimony basically has stated that it would allow for a house that's only 15 feet wide to be constructed, in order to try to keep it within the building envelope. The fact that you have a two-story home, you automatically are taking about three feet of that away for any stairwell, therefore giving you certain rooms, which will only be 12 feet wide. And again, the lot is not horribly deep, so you can't build a very long building either. So I believe that this standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property, or once again, we do have our public benefits clause. The reason I was asking about kind of how the funding works and everything like that was to sort of understand, and so everybody understands exactly who is profiting off of this, although it is very similar to a developer situation that we would expect to see. Again, we are not opposed to development, and we expect people to make income off of their development. The fact that we will be putting a single-family home where a vacant lot is definitely invokes the public benefits clause, so I believe that standard number two... No, number five has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having interest in the property. Again, this is a vacant lot. It was purchased as a vacant lot. Because of the size of the lot, it would be difficult to build anything here, and so I believe that standard number six is also met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, the house being built is a small and modest home. It is a single-family home, although we did not talk too much about the garage. It is a two-car garage. It is the standard size that we would expect to see for a two-car garage, which I believe was 20 feet by 20 feet. So, and looking at how large the lot is, and what is being requested to be built and then brought to it, as opposed to built on it, I believe that it is the minimum that is necessary, so I believe standard number seven is met. Is everyone in agreement with my findings on standards?
Yes.
Yes.
With that, I will ask if there is a motion in the matter of 1820 Dodge Avenue. Ms. McLennan, would you like to make your final motion?
Yeah.
I move in the case of 1820 Dodge Avenue, ZBA 15ZMJV-0030, that we grant major zoning relief for a 3.5 north... 3.5-foot north interior side yard setback where five is required, and the same on the south, and a 2.5-foot north interior side yard setback where four and a half feet is required, and a two and a half foot south interior side yard back... Side yard setback where four and a half feet is required for the eaves of the principal structure. A 2.5 north interior side yard setback where three foot is required, and a 2.5 south interior side yard setback where three foot is required for the detached garage. I further move that we approve this with the... Why can't I remember how to do this? This is weird. That the case... That the project proceed in substantial compliance with the testimony and documents presented here tonight.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With a vote of five in favor and zero opposed, the motion carries, and the project is approved. Good luck with your project. That concludes the two items that we had on our agenda this evening. Actually, we had three items, I guess. But with that, I would just like to make a little statement saying thank you to Beth for her years of service.
I'm gonna miss you.
I believe you've been on the board for eight years.
I think so, yeah.
So we would have had to have kicked her off in two anyway, so she's just taking the advantage of getting out before we ask her to leave.
Always leave them laughing.
But I do want to thank you for being here regularly, for participating in meetings, and for bringing your perspective to the table.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman Rogers. I have enjoyed my experience here, and I will miss everyone, so...
Well, thank you.
I'm gonna miss you, too.
And with that, I will ask, is there anything else to be brought before the board?
Given that all cases did conclude tonight, our meeting for June 2nd is canceled.
So with that, I will ask if there is a motion for adjournment.
A motion will adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned until our meeting on the 16th of June?
I believe.
Sounds right.
I think that's the date. If it's not, we'll find out.